...of the Harrison County Board of Education for September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. At this time, I'd like us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Cameron, would you be so kind to come and lead us in the pledge?
All right, Cameron.
Take it away, sir.
Oh, no, he's coming up here.
That's right.
All right, there you go.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well done, sir. Thank you very much.
Ah, the best I've ever heard.
Cameron.
What's Cameron's last name?
Uh, I didn't ask.
What's your last name, Cameron?
Keller.
Okay, yes, it is.
Keller, all right. Thank you very much.
Good job, Cameron Keller.
Pass that test.
All right, next, we have... What's your name?
Silas.
Silas? Oh, we have the Future Farmers of America recognitions, and Silas is one of the winners.
Hey, hang in there, Silas.
Okay, so let's add Matt, Matt Knopf, to come forward.
Matt, get yourself up here. Everybody.
And then, sir, yes? We have certificates here for all the Future Farmers of America winners. Then afterward, we'd like to take a picture with everyone.
All right, so...
You're trying to sell my signature, aren't you?
We had a really successful summer. Harrison County FFA in itself had a really successful summer between Liberty FFA and South Harrison FFA at the State FFA Convention. Liberty, we had two award winners. The first one, Mercedes Ray, daughter of Raymond and Barbara Kane, and a current senior at Liberty High School, was recently awarded as the state champion in the upperclassman FFA Creed Contest at the West Virginia FFA State Convention in July. Mercedes memorized the five-paragraph creed in December and competed regionally last February. After winning regionally, she got the opportunity to compete against six other first-year upperclassman agriculture students and arose victorious. Mercedes is a bright young woman who has a career goal of becoming a registered nurse after completing her education at Davidson Elkins College. And, Mr. Knopf, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is actually the third time in the last three years that a member from a Harrison County FFA chapter placed in the top three in one of the two Creed speaking contests. So...
Wow.
Okay, and our other individual from Liberty FFA is Mr. Nick Plogger, son of Harold and Vicki Plogger, and a current sophomore at West Virginia University and a Liberty alumni. He was recently awarded as the state champion in the Agriculture Sales Proficiency Area at the West Virginia FFA State Convention in July. Nick submitted an application, along with his record book of five years, to be judged in April. After winning the state title, his application then moved to be judged at the national level. After the final judgment calls were made, Nick Plogger was awarded a gold emblem in the top ten in the nation for his specific proficiency area. Nick is a bold, adventurous young man who is majoring in agriculture and extension education at WVU, hoping to become an agriculture teacher. So, Nick?
All right. You'll have to excuse me, I've been sick, so I have this nice Lou speaking voice, so, as I talk here. But, uh, we're happy to be here tonight and thank you all from the board for allowing us to come. We're proud of agriculture and we're proud of where it's come in Harrison County. And we look to a very bright future and we appreciate your support and continued support. So, um, starting out with our award winners, we actually have, at South Harrison, three teams that'll be competing nationally at the national level. Some of these individuals have now competed in three national competitions. Um, and it's just amazing what kind of talent we have here in our county. Uh, so, starting out, congratulations to Garrett Davis of South Harrison, of the South Harrison FFA Chapter. He was recently named state champion in the Employment Skills Competition and will compete nationally in October at the two thousand and nineteen National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Employment Skills is one of the twenty-five career leadership development event areas, covering job skills and everything from communications to mechanics. This event is designed to recognize outstanding FFA members for their ability to prepare an interview for real-world employment opportunities. Part of the preparation includes creating a cover letter, resume, and completing a job application. Participants also show their ability to think on their feet through a networking activity. CDs and LDEs help students develop the abilities to think critically, communicate clearly, and perform effectively in the competitive job market. Garrett has represented Harrison County in three national contests over the past three years and is exploring a career in ministry and clinical pharmacy after graduation. So, Garrett. Our next award winner is, and I do apologize due to, uh, prior engagements, some were not able to be here tonight. So, but the next team that will be competing nationally is, congratulations to Walker Wilson, Andy Reed, and Alexis Montgomery of the South Harrison FFA Chapter. They were recently named state champions in the agricultural sales competition and will compete nationally in October at the two thousand and nineteen National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Agriculture sales is one of the twenty-five career leadership development event areas, areas covering job skills and everything from communications to mechanics. Participants collaborate as a team to develop a pre-call plan for a variety of different customer types. Individual team members then utilize their skills in information gathering to sell a pre-selected product to the one of the customer types. Members also have their knowledge of sales principles tested in a written exam. Career development events and leadership development events help students develop abilities to think critically, communicate clearly, and perform effectively in a competitive job market. Walker will have represented Harrison County in three national competitions and is currently on track to pursue a career in welding at a local technical school. Andy will have represented Harrison County in three national competitions and is currently enrolled in Pierpont Community and Technical Center. Alexis will have represented Harrison County in two national competitions and is planning to pursue a career in agriculture business. All right. Congratulations to Lucas McDonald, Andy Reed, Walker Wilson, and Tyler Reed of the South Harrison FFA Chapter. They recently qualified in the top five in the state and will compete in May, two thousand and twenty, at the National Land and Range Competition in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Participants work as individuals on a team to evaluate and assess proper usages of the land by investigating soil property, slope, and other environmental factors. These determinations will aid in determining correct decisions that lead to the successful management and suitability for home building, land protection, and, um, and when building homes, uh, the reclaiming of land, or for farming and agricultural purposes. Lucas and Tyler will have represented Harrison County in two national competitions, while Andy and Walker, again, have represented the county in three national competitions. Lucas is not here tonight, he's attending Potomac State College and aspires to be a veterinarian. And he is currently enrolled at Pierpont Technical College, focusing on a degree in mechanical systems, in a mechanical systems pathway. Walker is currently pursuing a degree in welding, and Tyler's currently enrolled in college and aspires to be a petroleum engineer. All right, and last but not least, all right, so, congratulations to Silas Matheny of the South Harrison FFA Chapter. He was recently named state champion in the FFA Talent Show. Silas is a very talented individual who can play upwards to twenty different instruments. Silas also recently won the talent show at the Dodridge County Fair. Silas is a true symbol of how the FFA opens doors to everyone's individual and unique talents. He is a great young man with a love of music. And now, uh, we'd like Silas to come forward, and he's going to perform some songs after we give you your certificate. All right. I saw that you're going this way, right? Okay, good.
We got some technical difficulties. My dumb butt forgot to power cord.
Got a power cord back there?
There's that mic over there.
The power from the...
We need for the microphone?
What kind of board do you need, Silas?
I know what he means.
She just needs a word.
Power board from the back.
We're going to take a freight train down that station. I don't care where I go. Going from a mountain, the highest mountain on, no, 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 no. Can't you see? Oh, can't you see? Well, that woman, she been doing me. Can't you see? Oh, can't you see? Well, that woman, oh, she been doing me. By me singing now, far as Japan hill, I ain't never coming back. Days southbound, whole way jumping down, did that train run down that track? Can't you see? Oh, can't you see? Well, that woman, she been doing me. Can't you see? Oh, can't you see? Well, that woman, oh, she been doing me.
He's got to do another one. Hey, Doc, he has to do another one.
Found the power cord.
Got the found the power cord, he got, he got to do another one for us.
He's good, he's good. You're not done?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I just put that thing back here.
They say a great position can go through anything. If the bucket goes out, about a six string, falls apart, and he went right through it. Let's give him another big hand.
It's gonna be a little bit, little bit longer now.
No, okay, cool.
Doc entertained.
I could do worse.
But you don't want me to. Hey, we got all the ham all together. Was that all the brother?
Marshall Tucker.
Was that Marshall Tucker? Oh, yeah, magistrate, magistrate.
Father remembers, Father, from nineteen fifty-eight, dropkick me Jesus, who the God most alive.
Have you watched that?
Yeah.
There's a...
They don't matter.
Oh, I love it. Yeah, I'm on the fourth. I watch four on Sunday.
Yeah, he understands it part of the way, because then the string hits him in the face.
I watched the last one, I was like, I was going to watch.
I know, most two to nine.
Freaking out. Huh? Hey, at least they ain't booing. One, two, and three. Yeah, one, two, and three. Let me hear it. Here you go. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. I never got it. Yeah, we saw maybe the witch in that, so somewhere it just got. Oh, wow. Okay. So, we post off it. Okay.
He was friends with my parents.
And at least it wasn't like that.
First of me as a kid. I brought her up on the bed one time, I had the flu.
I want to get to your place too. Love them, want to bring them.
Put your wrenches there. What's your jacket? He runs out, think they're from.
Thank you.
Big mic's number one. We'll need to...
I...
Aro Mr.? Yes.
I'm, uh, I'm not playing. Ken wait.
Ken's not here. He's not here.
No, no, but he, he just loves to back.
But he only got to do his either, so...
He already did.
Oh, I, yeah, you and Todd.
He's bringing her around here. Will it start?
Ready one? I'm ready now, I'm ready. What are you doing? Huh? Yeah.
Just have someone call you. He can't wait, just have someone call you.
Their ears are gonna die. One out of here, bro. Just don't screw it up. Down. Check, 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 check. All right, take the main down, one up.
Pick up the chair.
That's two, yeah. All right, put one up. Check, check, you, you. All right. Number two. We just won, so I quit wasting time. Check, one, two, go. Take one up to zero. Put them both to zero. Check, check. All right, there we go. Cool. See, I'm coming out of there. I messed up enough, not you. It was me this time. All right, Cor. Ready? You're on the back of here, right?
Oh, definitely. Make it sing.
Are we, are we good this time?
Maybe.
All right. No real fast.
And I was born on this mountain, a long time ago. That boy lay knocked down a timber and stripped mine of gold. Well, they took everything, but she gave it all they got. But I'm not on this mountain, this mountain's my own. When I was young on this mountain, but now I'm old. And I knew every holler and who's singing. And there's a chill in the air on the miners' camp field. And there are ghosts in the tunnels that company sing. And I'm a woman, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty strong. That's a hope in me from my hand. And while they took everything, she gave it all they got. But I'm not on this mountain, this mountain's my own. And there's a hole in this mountain, it's dark and deep. Hold on the rum and stones, all the same, well, she gave it all. And there's a chill in the air on the miners' camp field. And there are ghosts in the tunnels that company sing. And I'm a woman, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty strong. That boy lay knocked down a timber and stripped mine of gold. And while they took everything, but she gave it all they got. But I'm not on this mountain, this mountain's my own.
All right, how bad was that? That was good. You got one more?
Yeah, I got one more.
What you got?
That'll do.
Cor, you know how bad this is gonna be, just turn the mic down. Huh? Roll skin, let's get, we're failed. Can't do the other one. Cause I would sing. Cor, we hear TNT, you can say, "Yeah, come on up here." Cor, this is what we have to do, buddy.
I'll make you a spring.
If it be works. Cor, tell me, tell me, please.
I mean, I do the show. She's Jason, that's really the show. So, we're doing their show.
There you go. We all do.
I got that, too. I got that, too.
I'll put two steps up here with that. Cor, please, just. I know if I get it wrong, yes. Cor. How come, just kidding. What do you meant to?
Hello, check, one, two. A little too much.
Good, good, yep, 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 yep. Can you all just hear the pedal, or is that the pedal through the? So, leave me hanging, wala wala old tree. Honey, come here down, 'cause I can't breathe. I'm up the mountain, I ain't coming down. Now you want me to leave, turn around your tail. I'm my own woman, I'm getting round. I'll give it round, back in time. So, come on, honey, don't you make me think. They got you, Cor, you're not a man. Now you're cold, when the sun comes down, you'll be at home. I'll save you round. Go get some magic, and carry on the scene. Hold my hand down, honey, run out of me. I'll be there slowly, in my Sunday night. You coming round, when I saw that girl. You blew our business, joining me in. And he's always saying, "Where have you been?" Now you're cold, when the sun comes down, you'll be at home. I'll save you round. Go get some magic, and carry on the scene. Hold my hand down, honey, run out of me. Don't leave me, honey, wala wala old tree. Honey, come here down, 'cause I can't breathe. I'm up the mountain, I ain't coming down. Now you want me to leave, turn around your tail. I want everybody up here, all the winners up here. Is this your hat? No, here.
Yes.
Put it on.
You put it on. Doc, you put it on.
Come on, keep your, whatever, I want all the FFA winners in here. Why don't you hold your instrument by yours?
I thought, I thought Park was dancing. Since he's, since he's relating to Jessica White.
So, how come you don't hold it to your chin? I got, I like to hold it to your chin. What, 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 what are we doing?
No, no, I was just asking, no, I was just, so you don't hold it to your chin?
The reason is, is because I do it this way, and it'll pick up on that mic and you can't hear me.
Huh?
I was just saying it's loud.
I just, I didn't, no, that's why I was asking.
Cause it's, you know, I play the lead part, but then I gotta play the rhythm part, too.
Yeah, yeah.
These are any soft, by the way, these are any soft, right?
Impressive.
We've got two more years, you see him, Eric, over here, you understand? Alright, everybody, turn around here, let's get a picture, up on a picture.
I'm happy, all I have to do is sit and press buttons.
Return in danger.
I'll have to come back and play some Elvis. You can sing some Elvis.
You can leave it there till we're done. Or if you want to take, what do you want to do?
Take it down now if you wanna go, you can leave it here if you wanna stay. It's up to you.
Yeah, it's taken down. Want to take a five-minute recess, or ten-minute recess? Take a ten-minute recess while, uh, they go ahead.
My son breaks it all down.
By the rest of the board members.
No, no objections.
We will move legal matters up to the front. Is there a, is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Alright, well, we gotta read the motion.
Okay.
We gotta read the legal motion. So, Mr., yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hammer, we'll read the legal motion.
Mr. President, I move pursuant to Chapter 69A-4, Subsection 12 of the West Virginia Code, Board going to executive session to discuss an illegal matter which by express provision of federal law or state statute or rule of law of the court is rendered confidential, which is not considered public record within the meaning of the Freedom of Information Act set forth in Article 1, Chapter 29B of this code.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Doughty has seconded, Mr. Hoag, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Any opposed, motion carries. Ms. Denegar, you're up. To return from executive session.
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to return from executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Messenger has seconded the motion, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now back in regular session. Alright, this brings us down to our next item, under Special Recognitions and Presentations, is the proclamation for West Virginia School Service Personnel Day.
You have it in your book.
Thank you.
Yes. I have it right here in front of me as well.
Well, I have it in my book.
Where is it? Oh, here we go. Alright, Sherri, where are you?
I'm right here.
I suggest you get up here then. I have to put my glasses on so I can see. The service personnel, I just want very quickly to say, the service personnel in Harrison County doing outstanding, an outstanding job, providing transportation, keeping buildings clean, keeping principals, teachers straight, the secretary of aides, and all of the service personnel. Given I've always had the greatest respect in, uh, the last couple of opportunities that we had, Sherri and I had to work together during the work stoppage, uh, we had, we had our relationship really blossom, is one way to put it. Did you agree it blossomed? So, with that said, uh, members of the board, this proclamation is by Governor Jim Justice. Whereas the school service personnel are involved in nearly every aspect of education by maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, and assisting in the classroom, as well as providing administrative support functions, safe transportation, and many other specialized services. And whereas, school service personnel are instrumental in West Virginia's responsibility to educate all students, and whereas, these dedicated individuals serve the children of West Virginia in our public education system, and have important role of non-instructional services in the educational system, and whereas, it is fitting, we recognize the outstanding work these individuals do for this state, their communities, and the students enrolled in West Virginia schools. Now, therefore being resolved that I, Jim Justice, Governor of the great State of West Virginia, do hereby proclaim September 20th, 2019, as the West Virginia School Service Personnel Day in the Mountain State, and encourage all citizens to join me in this service. And with this work of, I have to err into, set my hand and cause the great seal of the State of West Virginia to be upheld. Down at the capital city of Charleston, State of West Virginia, this 13th day of August in the year of our Lord 2019, and is the 157th year of the great State of West Virginia, Justice and the Secretary of State, Matt Warner. So, in great deal of pleasure, Sherri on behalf, and your acceptance of all of the service personnel.
I have four of us.
Where, that's where the four? The four horsemen, I want them up here. You all, I don't know if you're all aware of this, but now, Sherri, and Jimmy, come here, please.
Yes.
Uh, and, and, uh, that Sherri's now... Where are you, Sherri?
President.
Of all of West Virginia. Whatever she is, she's doing a heck of a job.
Well, congratulations.
And I gotta go down to her office in Charleston, they say she's got a big office, and really...
Doris got pictures. I go, it's bigger than this.
Alright, that's all I can hear.
Wow!
Yeah. I thank you. Alright, everybody. I hope it's really funny there, you all have a big time in the arts, man. Come on over here, everybody, come on, come on, push. Wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm putting that up here.
Wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa. I'm sucking it.
I'm sucking it, isn't it, hurry up?
They're holding their breath, boy.
The, the plan is what they wanted to do. Hey, everybody, let me have your attention one minute. Uh, Sherri would like to say a couple words, Sherri, would you? Excuse me.
I want my people up here. This was all their decision, too. There's no I and team, and it's a team effort. Our local, uh, school service personnel has decided to start giving out a $500 scholarship to one senior in Harrison County that has a family member that is a member of our organization, our association. So, I think Todd's putting it out on the website, uh, and letting all the counselors know. So, as long as you have a family member that's a member with us, um, they can fill out the application, write a little essay, and, um, Joe White and Jamie Mallory from our state office, because we all have people graduating too, uh, or family members. Joe White and Jamie Mallory will actually be reading the essays, there will not be any names on them, that way they don't know the last names, and they will be choosing them from our state office.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Now, we have our last presentation, Lincoln High School's funding request, Mr. McKean.
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you again concerning the addition and renovation of the Lincoln High School Field House, um, which was built in 1976, actually, for Schinston High School for football only, so you can see how that has changed over the forty-plus years of its original intent. I realize you have made requests for funding, but we want to make sure we stay at the forefront of those requests. Uh, several of us are here tonight, uh, we had a larger delegation in January, uh, Mrs. Scott could not make it tonight, our soccer coaches, actually, all of our fall, uh, sports programs have contests, like the coaches couldn't make it, and we had some other folks with some commitments, we do have a few of us here this evening. Um, and I do want to mention, we have full support from the middle school, uh, in moving forward with this, Mrs. Scott was here last time, and she's spoken to me about her commitment, uh, in, in it as well. Uh, like I said, we were here last January with our initial request for funding, yours for myself, and also Steve Kane, and, um, um, what name escapes me all of a sudden? Jim Christie, I'm sorry, from CEC, and they presented you with the conceptual, and had a presentation, did a very nice job with that, and, uh, helped us out tremendously with that presentation, with our groundwork, and, um, so we already have that, and, uh, just a reminder, we're willing and prepared to pay our share in this project as well. In your packets tonight, you have the materials list, which was developed in March, uh, by CEC, Steve Kane, Lincoln High School graduate, along with a student usage chart that Mrs. Hawkins, our athletic director, did up, that shows number of students of both Lincoln High School and Lincoln Middle School that use that. Again, the original purpose of this field house was Schinston High School football only. And this project is imperative for a number of reasons that we'll speak to tonight, but most importantly, this is a facility for students that's gonna be used by students. And Harrison County Schools has always put those facilities for students at the forefront, and that's the reason we think this is an extremely important project for our attendance area. Some examples of, of issues that we deal with, that will not be issues with the improvements and additions to our facility, so we've hosted two home football games so far. So, for example, at a Braxton County game, which was our opener, prior to the game, we had to close our larger of the two public women's restrooms, so three female football players from Braxton County could dress, because in the field house, there's no place for that, that won't be either with officials or with male football players, so we had to close down our larger of the two women's restrooms for a while, so those ladies could dress for the football game. Grafton Dance Line girls had to dress in that same restroom last Friday night. Grafton also has a female trainer, and we've had a female trainer in the past, and because of the structure and layout of the field house, she couldn't access the trainer's room, because both football teams being on each side of the trainer's room dressing prior to the game, and halftime of that same game, which I didn't mind doing it, I had to get ice for the opposing team, because the female trainer couldn't access it, again, because it's between the, uh, two football rooms, so she can't go in there with the boys in there. So, that has been a problem, and I think we've had female trainers in the past, that's been an issue, can't access the necessary equipment, the trainer's table, and we're putting opposing teams, we're trying to welcome into Harrison County Schools, and we're putting them in a bathroom that's used by the public, um, it's outlived its usefulness. At this time, I'd like Mr. Hawkins to come up and speak as well.
I don't have the.
I'm sorry.
List you were talking about, and what is the sum that you're?
You don't have this?
I have that, but that was from before. I, I just, you said there's a building materials list, and?
I do have a materials list.
And what is the final sum you were, you're requesting?
Gave us their estimate, and, and that includes all furnishing, and offers are expensive, and that would include, Mr. Keller, I believe, washer, dryer, lockers, everything, in the neighborhood, about $475,000. Our current field house, our current field house is 4,000 square feet, this addition, which would be an L shape, we'll still use the existing facility, of course, this addition would be 3,750 square feet. So, that cost is an all-encompassing, not just structure, but furnishings as well.
So, basically, almost a half a million, how much have you all, like?
We're going.
You said, do, I mean, you're asking for half, or how much have you?
Well, that would, that would be a discussion we'd have to have, I know right now I can commit $240,000.
Okay. I, I guess I just missed all that.
That's okay, this is January, maybe.
Sorry. I, I do remember the book, I, I did have a copy of the book.
Uh, good evening, thanks for having me. I am Rob Hawkins, I'm, this is my six-years-old head coach at Lincoln High School for the football program. I have been on the staff for seventeen years, so I have been through a couple decades of, you know, as things have changed. Like, uh, Mr. McKean said, it was built in 1976, and the changes that have gone on in football, for example, with, uh, coaching staffs are much larger. Uh, back then, the coaches, they had two coaches. Now we have four, five, six, so we have to accommodate that. Uh, training, both weight training and... that. Uh, training, both weight training and the athletic training part of it, you know, we now have a athletic training room, which wasn't, didn't have back then, and of course, the weight facilities, we have there, uh, on-site in order to make it more convenient and to accommodate our student athletes, of course. Uh, now with, uh, two, or middle school soccer, right now they have one team, uh, track uses a facility in the spring. Uh, the middle school football, which is one thing when they moved schools, when they were in the old school, they used to practice daily at that facility. And so now they are practicing on our practice field, but when it comes to locker room facilities, so now you have, uh, two football teams in the two locker rooms that we have, so if a girl's soccer team comes to have a contest on a Tuesday or Thursday night, they have to wait till we vacated before they can use either of our locker facilities, and the middle school does not have a place where they actually keep their equipment there. They have to bring their equipment back and forth daily. And plus, with our locker room facility, anytime there's a contest, we have to share our locker facility, like our middle school uses on their night. And again, they have to wait till we're out of there. Last Wednesday, we were a little late getting off the field, so my players didn't have the opportunity to shower, which is a health issue. Uh, you know, they should all shower as soon as they get off the field, but I had to send them one without because we had to accommodate the middle school. So, uh, there's a lot of different ways that only having those two locker rooms really affects us on a day-to-day basis. Uh, the new facility, and we have, uh, consulted with the middle school and with our soccer coaches, and we have tweaked the original design a little bit to give us five locker rooms. One each for middle school football and, uh, high school football, where we would be able to keep our stuff daily, and soccer would each have theirs. And then we have one locker room, which would be used, uh, for visitors on game nights, and the other locker rooms could be used for, like we said, if the opposing team has females, or, uh, dance line, or cheerleaders, or if we have lightning problems or weather problems to get people out of the weather, that we would have to. So, uh, we have tweaked that, so now we have, uh, like I said, five locker rooms that we would have. Uh, we have, like I said, we have consulted, uh, middle school. We have their full support, and, uh, the only other thing I would tell you is, as far as facility goes, we have tried to make it at the best we can to accommodate us over the years. We are just running out of room, and that goes with storage. Uh, the only storage facility we have for football is a closet-sized space that is a converted restroom, and that's where we keep all our stuff. Uh, in the off-season, we have to keep all the stuff in either the trainer's room or the office. I mean, it's a huge investment. Football is a huge investment of uniforms. We're talking thousands of dollars worth of stuff, which we have to put in not always secure facilities, because other people are using it throughout the year. So, you know, just the fact of the storage issues that we have right now, because we had to use so much other space to accommodate, uh, the rest of it as we go, you know, as we go through the year. So, uh, a- as a football program, we are doing the best we can, and we've tried to, but, uh, I think that we accommodate both our football program, the middle school football program, and both high schools and middle school athletes if we did have more space, and that's what this facility, uh, would give us. Uh, the other thing I would ask you, if any of you would like to come and see it, uh, or visit any of the other facilities to compare, to see, you know, what the situation is, including the one at Hightfield that I believe W I Middle uses. And you will see, you know, we're behind the times, and we're trying to catch up. You know, we're trying to do all we can for our student athletes, and, uh, this is the next step we feel is a school that we need to make. Alright?
I, maybe you can answer a question. I was just looking at that, and what stood out to me was a, uh, being hit in the face with a sewage smell. Has that been addressed by our maintenance?
Uh, it, the field house has always had that, and there have been times where we had to have work on it, uh, with the drains and everything. I really can't speak to it. I don't know if anyone in the delegation can. I, I mean, at this point, it smells the same as it did when I played back in 87. I mean, I'll be honest, you walk in there, and there is a smell, and, uh, the drains have, they have done some work on it, but, uh, I think one thing that would happen with this is it would kind of upgrade that system as far as going into, you know, the city system.
That was my next question, if this, uh, if this proposal was, is...
Yes.
You know, targeted, help it, solving the issue.
It's the hope that it would have to upgrade that system if we add more locker rooms.
When he was talking about space, whatever happened to the whole entire downstairs of Lincoln? Do you not have secured storage there? Not that that has a bearing. Michael and I had gone down there and toured that one time when you were principal, and what an enormous storage area. Just wondering if it was ever cleaned out or...
Yeah, it was cleaned out a few years ago. Maintenance and they shot clean it out. Um, we have secured it, uh, with the key on the elevator. You have to have a key to get down to the, uh, to the basement. County cage, uh, down there is, uh, takes a large portion of it. Uh, United Way, on United Way Day of Giving this summer, they came and took a good bit out. Mr. Hammonds worked with them like that. So there is a good bit down there, but we, um...
I was just curious when you said, like, is storage are secured? I just remembered. It's as big as the school, and they were supposed to be clearing that out a few years ago.
And to speak to that, when, when we do get things in, in the off-season, we do secure them at the school until the season comes along, so we can take those. Like, we got new uniforms this year. We did secure them at school until we had to pass them out. So, so we do utilize them when we can, but as far as bringing, you know, 100 pairs of shoulder pads back and forth, it's...
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I know. It just, I don't know, for some reason, I should start thinking of that. It's been such a big door that, and never really knew what happened to it.
Uh, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So where are the bulk of the funds, the 240,000, coming from?
That's out of our athletic funds, our levy money and, and money that we've, uh, we've accrued in our athletic funding.
Okay.
We have not, because we haven't moved forward with this, obviously, without, uh, approval from the board, we haven't sought out yet donations, in-kind funding. Of course, Ms. Scott said she would help with fundraising as well, so we didn't want to start that without an official, no K to move forward, but that will be part of it as well. Yeah.
And Mr. President, if I can ask that that be placed on the next agenda, next, uh, meeting agenda, if Dr. Menchey could get with him and give us an actual number to bring?
Absolutely.
We'll do it.
Appreciate that very much, very much, and that, that means a great deal to the community. I do want to finalize that again, and I appreciate that, Mr. Hammack, that this isn't a football issue. Uh, I know the football coach is here, but the soccer coaches would be here, and, uh, and the track coaches would be here as well with other commitments, but it's a multi-sport, multi-school issue, uh, for the community. We have a thousand kids on campus, and we're always looking to increase our participation, which we have. Um, like I said, Harrison County Schools is always looking for ways to improve facilities, and I think this would be a tremendous upgrade, and what it means for the community with a, with a 6 through 12 campus, with a thousand schools. Uh, bleachers are good, press box is good, and, and it would just be a tremendous, and maybe that would increase our, uh, participation as well. We had more kids in the weight room this winter than we ever did. You were over there till seven o'clock at night in order to cycle everybody through. Um, I know middle school doesn't have track, or doesn't have boys soccer for the last couple of years, but track numbers are going well. Our cross-country numbers have...
Twenty-two for middle.
Twenty-two for middle school, and we're actually going to field a full team of cross-country this year for the first time, so we're working very hard, getting more, getting our participation up, knows, knowing what that means to overall student achievement as well. So, thank you very much.
While you're still there, I guess, the one thing, uh, and this is off that subject, but, uh, when Jimmy, when you were there, it's always bothered me. I, I still think we need to put that back on the front burner of looking at that property behind there, awake to connect the field to the school behind. I hate driving on 19 and seeing kids out on the sidewalk. Someone's gonna get hurt, because you know how kids shove each other into traffic, and something bad's gonna happen, so...
And that's on the agenda for my September, September 25th LSIC. I think it's been on the agenda for several years, uh, but it's back on the agenda again for my LSIC here in a couple of weeks.
It just doesn't make sense to have that, some sort of property back there and then taking it cleared out to, to 19, and we talked about that when Mr. Lopez was there, so I'd like to see that.
Okay, we're, we're gonna pursue that as well. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, next we have one delegation this evening. Uh, we have Shannon Keller.
Do I go up there?
Yes.
Okay. I'm probably loud enough about it, but... Mr. President, last winter, Mr. McKean presented to this board a need for funding that would be co-funded between the board and the school. I realize that you have a tough task in order to figure out needs versus wants, and greater needs versus lesser needs. I also realize you need to figure out how to make a budget stretch. We know the best way to stretch a budget is to co-fund with in-kind donations and real dollars. Therefore, it is my belief that this need is in line with stretching the budget. Now it comes down to greater need versus lesser needs. Our field house was built in the 1970s to accommodate 50 high school football players. Today, we have football, boys and girls track, boys and girls soccer, as well as weightlifting for multiple sports for both boys and girls. We also accommodate all of the same sports for our middle school for both sexes. I just want to be clear here that my 12-year-old niece is in the exact same building to get ready for her events as a 19-year-old male student who is weightlifting. I believe this is a major problem with the potential to become even worse. This obviously is no fault of the administration, the coaches, or you. However, we need a solution now. Due to the passing of the West Virginia SSAC three-week period and the flex days being allowed, it is possible and has happened that over 300 kids have used this facility in the same day. I don't know if you've ever visited our little field house, but I can assure you it's a miracle that that has even been made possible. If this does not stack up as a great need, I am looking forward to what this board puts ahead of this. I am asking for this to be looked at as a serious need versus a luxury. In closing, I would like to note that, to my knowledge, the Lincoln feeder system has not had any facility improvements since the SBA middle school, which by the way, had zero upgrades to the SBA plans unlike other recent county SBA facilities. I feel that our community needs to come together on this one, and I will do my part to make sure that members of our community and others are aware of the situation at Lincoln. Thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to seeing this project through as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, there are no other delegations this evening, so this brings us to the superintendent's update.
Mr. President, we have quite a aggressive, uh, comment period tonight under superintendent's update. I first want to recognize that Mr. Todd Poole, Todd, uh, Todd is gonna come up here, and though he missed his opportunity to speak at Stonewall, he's incredibly excited about speaking tonight about, uh, all the upgrades and some of the great things that are happening in Harrison County with technology. So I've asked him to give his report tonight under the curriculum and technology update.
We covered just about everything, uh, that we wanted to cover at the, at the retreat. Uh, then we kind of ran out of time and got bumped, me and Jimmy, so. Um, I just wanted to finish up on some of the things that we're doing communication-wise, and I have a few things that I'd like to share and kind of unveil. Wanted to unveil this at the board retreat, but I'll need to step up here so I can play our new promotional video. I just wanted to make sure that you guys got to see this before it was released. Actually, I have two of these. This is a 90-second clip.
Harrison County Schools has a longstanding tradition of providing outstanding educational opportunities for its students. Comprised of 24 schools, our district serves the needs of pre-K through 12th grade students throughout Harrison County. Providing a safe, supportive learning environment for all, we offer a well-planned, comprehensive curriculum designed to meet the needs of every student at every grade level. The elementary curriculum emphasizes core subjects augmented by music, art, health, integrated technology offerings, and physical education. Middle school students are introduced to programs, career counseling, and coursework that will help them make the transition to high school. Our high schools offer a broad and challenging curriculum to meet diversified needs and prepare our students for future careers or post-secondary education. Advanced placement honors, as well as dual-credit partnerships, are available through local universities. Healthy Grandfamilies is a free initiative to provide information and resources to grandparents who are raising grandchildren. Healthy Grandfamilies is a partnership with Harrison County Schools, Family Services of Harrison County, and United Way. Harrison County Schools, where all are leaders and all are learners.
There's the waves.
Very nice.
Um, we had that professionally done, so, yeah, they do voiceover.
I was also wondering.
What's that? Oh, to put me asleep?
No, no, I thought maybe he had like a special mic.
Nah.
Because it was really good.
You said, "Mr. McKean taught me," you're talking to us.
Harrison County. So, um, as part of that deal, I actually was able to work out, um, a couple of things. We can use this however we want. We can re-edit this, pop it up, pretty much do whatever we want. We kept it kind of plain as far as graphics goes. We can add anything additional in at a later date. And, uh, the same with this one. I know it's been kind of a push to, uh, work with U T C a little bit, and I was able to get the 30-second clip as part of the same contract worked out for them, so I have that as well.
United Technical Center trains students and adults for high-scale positions while providing state and nationally-recognized industry credentials to succeed in an ever-changing job market. With rigorous and relevant career and technical educational opportunities, U T C offers a variety of programs from collision repair, electrical, power sports, and welding to cosmetology, practical nursing, law enforcement, and more. Adult evening classes are also available for those looking to build new skills or pursue a career. United Technical Center, your key to educational excellence in a 21st-century job market.
So we have full rights to, uh, work with, uh, local television and stuff to, uh, release this, and they can use it as PSAs, uh, which is, which is great. I mean, we, we've never had that before. Um, typically, when you work deals out like this, they own all the rights and you get nothing, so I wanted to make sure that if we entered into something like that, that we had the right.
Are they going to do a PSA for us? This is a PSA?
This is a PSA.
Have it sourced now. Have, have I seen it?
Yeah, well, no.
The TV just now.
Just now.
Catch up, dog.
Release it to the world tonight.
Tonight? Oh, this is the grid. I was saying, I haven't seen this.
It would have been released a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we've been waiting.
Yeah, we're a month behind.
Okay.
So, uh, that's, that's, that's that part. Um, I, I wanted to touch a little bit on Family Day, which was, once again, a month ago, so I, I had a few things I wanted to share for Family Day. Uh, one of which, if I can bring it up, is a, we had a 360-degree camera there, and if this works, I wanted you to, if you weren't there, you get a bird's eye view of what the mall looked like on that day. 360 degrees. Very good turnout. Uh, it's always a huge popular event. Uh, of course, we'll be back in November to do music at the mall, but this is just, I can't tell you how much great comments we get every year when we do this. We've kind of moved into a, a steam stem technology kind of a theme, so we have a lot of teachers and volunteers that come out, and we have a lot of different activities in the center of the mall, uh, for the kids to do and work with their parents, and I'm sure that increases toy sales at Christmas time, but, uh, but it's a lot of fun, and it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's a blast, really. I mean, it's really turned into probably more than we originally even thought it could be, so it's, it's beautiful. And then we had Mr. Science in, who is actually a national presenter, and this, this clip was kind of funny, so I thought it might be fun to share. Um, he was in, he's been on Good Morning America and, and different shows, national shows, and he was, he was at our event this year and did a little, a little science experiment.
When you do this, you two, you're gonna take the pencil and you're gonna go through the bag like that, and see there she stays dry. Okay, are you all ready?
Yeah.
Grab a pencil and jab it through the bag. Are you okay, mom down there? Okay. Oh, 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 stop, stop. Okay, here we go. I fixed it. Now, once you start going, don't stop. Got it? Okay. It's just a little toilet water. Okay, go ahead. Jab through. Don't go so fast. Take it slow. Take it slow. I don't want this mom, she prob... How long did it take you to fix your hair this morning?
Oh, yeah, not...
Not long. Okay, good, good, good. Okay, let me hold this. Ladies first. Go ahead. Go through. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Okay, so that was a lot of fun. He did, uh, two shows for us, uh, that day, and the kids had a blast, so. Uh, lots of fun and lots of good stuff that we're doing. We actually, uh, did some live streaming, uh, to Facebook, uh, that day, so we had a lot of activity on social media. Um...
And then, and then playing off of that, um... And then, and then playing off of that, we just, I just kind of took, took a peek at some of the things we've been able to do communication-wise over the last, last school year. We did over 1,000 social media posts last year, which is astonishing, and what's even more astonishing is the fact that we were able to reach over a million different accounts that way, which is just unbelievable when you, you know, it's just astounding what you, what you can actually reach with social media. And because of that, we're actually in the process of, well, not in the process, we're doing it, increasing our outreach in social media, and we've expanded into Instagram, and we've got a, we've always had a Twitter account, we've done a lot with Twitter, but Instagram is really, really picking up a lot. We're getting a lot of activity in, in the Instagram world. We now have a YouTube channel. We have Periscope. We're able to stream live to Periscope, YouTube, Facebook, just all those mediums. We can do that simultaneously now, so that, I'm anticipating at Music at the Mall, being able to actually stream all that live, which would be very cool, especially for families that live, you know, out far away, or, or grandparents that might not be able to, to be able to attend, whatever the situation might be, they can actually see that kind of stuff. So, and beyond that, we've actually recently gotten a HootSuite account, and if you're not familiar with that, that's a platform that allows you to, to basically manage multiple flat platforms at the same time, so you can, you can hit all your social media at the same time. Plus, you can manage all the comments and things, questions that come in. You can actually assign those to various people. Obviously, different people don't know, don't know the answers to everything, so if, if something comes in that we need an answer to, that Jimmy might be able to answer, or Donna might be able to answer, we can actually assign that to them, and they can actually answer it through the platform and answer the question from the platform to that actual, actual social media site, site, which is really nice.
Quick question. Could we do a Q and A with Dr. Manchin?
Yes.
I was going to.
Public Q and A, where you put it on the website, do Q and As?
Yep.
Well, Ashley, since he just said that, you're talking about your social media platforms, and it's reached over a million people. So curiosity, how many have you had on the website?
Website? We don't track the traffic on the website lately. We used to, but it's, you know, that, that has gone down over the years. We used to get over 20, 20,000 hits a day on our site, but when we changed platforms, some of the analytic software can't run within, without actually having to code it in the background, so that, and also because of some of the accessibility issues, you can't bury code within a page to some degree, or else it will get picked up and then set up a red flag for, for accessibility. So I backed off on that a little bit, but again, we used to get over 20,000 hits a day when we used to monitor that. So again, less, less traffic on the website, more towards social media.
But if you have social media, like French just said, a Q and A, you would just have a link on your social media that would take you to the website or wherever you're going to.
Yeah, the whole point, the whole point is hitting people from different angles. You know, it's not just one thing, it's multiple things these days versus, at one, at one time, we used to say everything's on the website. You know, that's, that's the, that is the central point for everything, and today it's just so different because of just so many different ways to reach audiences. So that, that's a big change. It's interesting, you know, to have been here and see, and seen the change and the growth, and how at one point we were here, now we're, you know, here with things, and then we, you know, the, the audience just shifts and goes in different areas, so it's very interesting when you look at it.
Doc, before you go, to something else, the thing that's used the video, the first video you showed us.
Yes.
Could there, can you add to that, okay, like, like lead into it before you go into Harrison County Schools, could there not be something with Dr. Manchin, you know, a thing where he would speak and then lead into, you know, into?
We can do that, and that's, that's why I wanted those rights to be able to edit that however we want. That way, as, you know, as personnel changes and stuff, we're not stuck with, with one particular thing within the video. That way, we had the, we had the flexibility to be able to alter that if we needed to, so.
What you showed us is a great, great video, but I just thought, having him as a lead-in to Harrison County, you know, schools, and then going to show him.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, but again, that's why I wanted to secure those rights to be able to edit it, you know, so we can do whatever we want with it.
Thank you.
We're also going to be, as you see this year, we're, we're going to be doing a little bit more with print media, even though that sounds like something that's somewhat antiquated, it's still, it's still a valid medium for a lot of people, so I'll, I'll introduce some things at a later date. Print, print media. We're doing a few, a few more things. We kind of, we used to do a lot, and then we kind of backed off from it, went more web-based, but now we're kind of, we've got an opportunity that I'll talk about more later date to get into that a little more.
You know, there's a large segment of, and I know the print media, but of my generation that's all, and I read the newspaper, and, so, you know, we cannot, oh, I didn't mean, is Katie still there? Katie's here. I forgot you were there, but, no, seriously, don't, don't forget us.
Did you, did you read the newspaper?
I still read the newspaper, and that's how I get, in, in the old-fashioned way, on, on, on TV, and the news, and, and the newspaper.
See, a public relations professional would be able to gear the articles into the advertisements to that, to that groupie.
I mean, because my generation, you talk to anytime, and everybody says, "Did you see the newspaper today?" Now, when you get to the young people, no, but with mine, everybody, we talk about, "Did you see the, I saw the article today in the newspaper." I hear that often, your dad.
My dad is like every single day.
Yeah, the article in the newspaper.
I was, I was a newspaper carrier.
Let me tell you what, that's the people, they vote, and they're very active in the community, so.
Paper boy, that was me.
Okay.
There are no blue paper boys, I don't think.
I keep hearing, I don't want you to forget about us.
Not like me. Okay, so again, we're going to be getting back into things like, we've got a magazine idea that we like to do, and send that home to the parents. We're looking to do maybe a newsletter, which we haven't done for a little while. We'll do that in a print format and web, web-based format, so. We were also, the Department of Education is working directly with the counties a little more on the communications side, so we've been to a few meetings that they've hosted to kind of, to kind of parallel and to kind of share ideas with the Department of, with their communications department, and that's, that's a great resource as well that, they didn't really reach out before, but I think they're seeing the value of it and inviting us to the table, which is wonderful, so. And that's, that's really about it. I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of where we're at and what we're doing.
And you and I talked today, that I, I think is a, is a magnificent way of getting the information out, is the one-to-one, and now we're moving into the elementaries, and you and I talked about that today. It won't be a one-to-one, but why don't you tell the board quickly as to, as we're talking about devices and getting in our students' hands, and Harrison County's taking the leadership around the state.
Yes, that was the, one of the agenda items at the board retreat that you guys approved. That's for the elementary refresh, I'll call it, and that's getting more devices within the classroom, there's a big call for that, and actually, they're, they're coming in right now, and they're in this building, so as they come in, we're getting them ready, and we'll be getting them out here real soon. But that will provide more devices, more access within the classroom. It's not exactly one-to-one, they, they didn't feel like, the principals didn't feel like they were quite ready for a true one-to-one at the elementary level, but what they want those classroom, more, more classroom access, so we're putting classroom sets in with, with that approval that you guys made on, in August, so. Real excited about that, so that's, that's going to be a real nice, handy thing for them, so. But that's, that's pretty much it, and I don't want to, I was, I think somebody said I had two and a half minutes to get this done, so I think I've gone way over that.
We just, we just want to hear Jimmy.
Jimmy's pushed.
30 seconds, Jimmy. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Sounds great. It does.
Good job, buddy. Mr. President, we have Mr. Jimmy Lopez. Jimmy will be talking about a myriad of things, including his update that he was going to give at Stonewall.
Hi, it's great to have the opportunity to present my reports, Doc. And I'm going to start with facilities. Just briefly, an update on the CEFP, we're still in the process of doing the building evaluations, then we'll do some goal setting. So we haven't had a meeting yet, but we probably will be targeting for the first part of October to have another public meeting.
When was the last meeting?
It was in August. I believe it was August.
Okay.
But there wasn't really a lot.
I just want to interrupt you on this, just because I was going to bring it up during his day. I, has it, are you okay with the attendance on this? Because this is very, very important.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't, from what I understand, we aren't getting the attendance.
Well, we've only had three meetings, but, but a lot of it is, we're, we're kind of at a standstill while we work on the, the building evaluations and assessments, and then we'll, we'll move forward pretty quickly, and we're going to drum up a lot more interest as we get a little closer to goal setting and putting things in place.
Okay, because that was a concern of mine, and also, when we have these people coming in, I would like to make sure that we have refreshments and drinks for them, because they could be there for several hours, and, and I was kind of told there was no water or anything for them to drink, so next time with these meetings, just keep them coming. Let's make sure we're welcoming, and we're excited.
We're trying to keep them to an hour.
Do you know what I mean?
I'm going to need your credit card, Doc.
That's the only reason why I've interrupted you, because I, I think they'll keep attendance in the community more exciting than having people volunteer their time for three hours and not have anything to drink or cookies or whatever.
Okay. We've tried to be very mindful of their time, keeping it within an hour, but I can see some of those moving a little longer as we move forward. Still with facilities, we met yesterday with Laura Trent and McKinley. We went quickly just to kind of get a brief overview of all their programs, student numbers, staff, and so Tom Worleage was there, probably spent a good hour and a half there talking with Mrs. Trent, and I've reached out to Greg Moore, and I've talked to Scott Hague as well, but we will all be meeting together as we begin that planning phase.
Jimmy, the board, and, and I, the board has asked that, and I know this was a concern of you, you brought it to my attention, the board has asked that we go out to all the, the, the three schools affected relatively soon before we put the, on the agenda for any, any school closures, so we'll be doing that over the next probably week. I'll ask Angela to, to set up dates at Lost Creek, at South Harrison.
Well, we won't be doing any.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. Adamson, Wilsonburg, Adamson and Wilsonburg.
Yeah, okay.
And United High School.
Okay.
So Angela, I didn't want to forget that, the board mentioned that to me tonight, and prior to the next board meeting, we will have, we will meet all, all three venues, all of us, the, the team that does.
And with the Gore Project, the SBA needs application's been turned in, I turned it in last week, so again, what Dr. Manchin was just mentioning are things that we, was, was things that were on my mind, that we need to make sure that we meet the timelines prior to the, the December awarding of the projects. Also, I would like to just update you, all the theater lighting is complete in all five high schools now, and I, I haven't actually seen them actually working because it's, they're very sophisticated to use, but there is a training that is going on, the last training that is taking place this Friday for Robert C. Byrds. And, and then moving into some of the ESG projects that we've had, we've had to tweak some of the HVAC systems and the controls. Everything is online and working well, just getting things to work some of the bugs out with the temperatures and the set points, but things are, are moving, moving very well. Also, when, when we did have the SBA come down and visit both Wilsonburg and Adamston, David Roach, the executive director, was, was very complimentary of the facilities, both Adamston and Wilsonburg, because they're older facilities, they like the fact that you could see that we are taking a lot of pride, and that, that has a lot to do with you all, that's the expectation, and it's been the expectation for quite a long time. It's very important to those communities, but the schools look fabulous, and I, and I really have to give kudos to Joe Ammons, because he took over a pretty large area of responsibility this year with the ESG projects. We had a retirement with our custodial coordinator, and we brought Kenny Maxwell on, it's done a fabulous job. He was my head custodian, actually, at both high schools that I was principal at, and he knows what these custodians need, and it really seems to be working well as we've consolidated that department with the facilities. So I, I do want to accommodate, and, and David Roach actually came up to me and also to Joe, and gave us a verbal accommodation of how nice the facilities look. So, so real proud of the, the fact that not only maintenance and, and the custodial department is being able to get together, but, but also our service people, because they work diligently, they seem to buy into some of the changes we've made this year. We feel real positive about that and positive for the future. Do you guys have any questions about facilities before?
I have, with the, with the new Lost Creek, where you're, where you're meeting, are they taking into some of the considerations that we had talked about during that, that meeting? I know Kristen had mentioned like a, a basement on the backside, I mean, are they, have they talked about it, it designed, like we were, we liked a lot of the stuff that we, we'd saw from, there was a lot of great ideas floating around that.
Exactly, and we talked about that a little bit yesterday, but mainly, Tom Worleage, the architect, wanted to get an idea of the educational spaces that are going to be required, you know, to meet the curriculum demands. So from that point, and I know the direction of Dr. Manchin, that you've set for Dr. Manchin, those are obviously on their mind, and, and they realize that, that you guys have some expectations to reduce the amount of space, increase the amount of space of the middle school, but increase the amount of space usage for the elementary school as well.
I just, before they, they show us the final draft.
Oh, we're not even close to that.
Right, I just, I just like to make sure that they hear some of our inputs into that, that we liked from some of the other presentations.
Absolutely. And I can say that Mrs. Trent did a great job. She's a strong advocate for her school, staff, community, students, so I think that you've got a good representation there, and, and that will not go unnoticed, so we will, we'll move forward with that. Okay? Moving on to, quickly to transportation, just a brief overview with transportation, we have 115 employees. It's, it's a large, it's a large department, a lot of working parts, we have 91 bus operators, 12 special needs aides, eight mechanics, two bus supervisors, and a secretary. So, and those are just the full-time, the people that we have. We transported students nearly 1.2 million miles last year, and, and proud to say that, you know, safety is, is always the most important thing when we transport students. We did have a few minor bus accidents, no injuries to students, and, and most of the time, they're in the parking lots, and, and we've, we've, are moving forward to try to make some corrections with that. Proud to say right now that we have 10 bus substitute operators. It's the most we've had in a significant amount of years. We actually had three bus operators sitting at home, not working today, and, and on seven other occasions, so we, we, we knew that we needed to bridge that gap and take a look at what we needed to do to fill that void, and, and thankfully, that we've been able to put the promissory note together, and it's been very successful. And might I add that the, all those that signed the promissory note have fulfilled their obligation, each and every one of them, so hopefully, we can continue to do that, because that was, that was a concern of all of us involved. It's made it, it's made an impact, it's made a difference, and the pay raise has made a difference, too. A lot of our people from within are doing a lot of good recruiting of family members, friends, reaching out, and that's probably one of the best recruiting mechanisms we have. With that pay raise, you know, we, we talked about looking at the efficiency of our department, and, you know, those are things that I know that I'm setting my goal with Dr. Manchin. One of the things quickly with, with transportation is, it's, it's, the logistical set of parameters to make decisions to transport kids is very complex. You know, you have to meet the time, the time restraints for making sure that students have the, the travel. restraints for making sure that students have the travel time, isn't over the recommended 43-36 policy, meeting the academic minutes, instructional minutes. So, when you put all that together, it ends up being very logistical, very complicated. But we are looking at some ways. I think we've cut, over the past three years, there's been five positions, full-time positions cut in that department. We do have a lot to look at with bus runs, and a lot of it has to do with, sometimes we're transporting very few kids, but a large distance out in the Wallace, close to Wetzel County, close to Marion County, and those areas. Technology, we've been looking at some of the technology that we did have in place previously. It really did not mesh together, and so we're looking to upgrade some of that technology so it actually is usable. And I'll update you at a later board meeting. One of the things that we know that, and I think that everybody's aware of, you know, we have 25 schools, and we have a lot of academic programs, and we meet the needs in transportation, getting kids where they need to go. It's a large commitment. We transport kids in midday runs, and also in the evening, not counting athletic trips, 400 and 70 hours a week. Okay? So, that's significant. And that usually ends up being overtime. So, and we enjoy making sure that we can get our kids where they need to go safely. But with all the different academic programs that we've put in, there's a price to pay for that. Just briefly, too, and this will close my presentation. I went to Mon County today, and I was getting some curriculum for our bus drivers, and met with their assistant superintendent, and just kind of compared some numbers. They have around 400 kids more than we do. You know, we haven't gotten our second month report yet. We have 91 bus drivers and routes. They have 110. We have 12 special needs buses, and they have 24. And, you know, God bless them that they're able to do that. But I think if we can continue to work with some of the reporting and getting some of those line items of expenses corrected, I think that we can continue to be a little more efficient. So, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yeah. How many new buses or old buses are getting rid of, and how many are going to purchase?
Okay. We're going to purchase eight new school buses this year. We had gotten behind a little bit from previous years, because, one, I guess we took some money out to build the new bus garage. So, we normally purchase six per year. This year, we're going to be able to purchase eight, due to some carryover money and utilizing the money that we have. And I think we're looking at selling or auctioning seven or eight buses. I can't remember exactly.
Have you sold to other counties?
If they-
I just always remember being at a conference, and we were saying we were getting eight new buses, and there were some of the smaller counties, namely, it was Tucker County, they said they get like one or two. And they have such a vast area, and it all comes down to the formula formulation and school stuff. Anyway, I was just curious, you know, other counties that aren't as fortunate with the school formulas we are?
Yeah.
If we're allowed to donate or sell or auction to other schools.
The board has broad authority to do that, absolutely.
By the time we're getting a bus, because we have so many buses, if we're getting eight buses, they're pretty much at the end of their life, correct?
They are. You know, but some of the counties have not been as disciplined as we have and fortunate to replace their fleet. And that's another thing, and I talked to their assistant superintendent. Some of the reporting that we do statewide, I think that we have to do a little better job in our department, working with finance, to do a little better job and be a little more precise with our reporting and collecting data, because that could significantly increase the money that we have available for our department, but also decrease the idea of what we're paying to transport our students. Some of that, I think if we do our reporting a little better, it can improve as well.
Thanks, Jimmy. All right. Dr. Manchin, do you have anything else for the superintendent's update?
Thank you, Jimmy. Good job, buddy. Thank you. Yes, Mr. President. Under Finance, tonight, you will be getting some information as to the financial condition of the Harrison County Board of Education, and later in the agenda. But right now-
Well, let's do it. Do you want to do it and get them up to speed later?
Okay.
Yeah, right. And, Mr. President, Mrs. Stuller, anything on personnel you wanted
to-
Just an update on the counselors. We posted for the four counselors on the class posting. We had applicants for two. We reposted again. WVU was here and met last week. They have some TIRs that are finishing. They have eight students, actually, in the counseling program that we will most likely be able to utilize. So, it just will take a little bit of time to repost and do that. So, there's going to be people out there to fill the jobs for counselors.
So, we have 25 counselors for 25 schools now, right?
Yes, there will be a counselor at every school.
Perfect.
And then, the larger schools will go to have it on the first.
Mr. President, we had a personnel policy that's been out on comment for 30 days. I believe the 30 days is up, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to bring that to the floor.
There are no objections. We can bring the personnel policy to the floor.
No objection.
And with that, I mean, if you want to pass it out, but I was, I mean, I intend to make the motion that we, I guess, vote to decline the-
Vote to dismiss would be appropriate.
Well, we could, if we table it, we can permanently table it, whatever the proper motion is.
I think the tabling would be the appropriate method. And we have had the opportunity to speak with our representatives of AFT, WEA, service personnel, and per the direction of the board, Mr. President and members of the board, we were able, I think, to reach a conclusion based on what you've directed me, and that there was some concerns. Before we do that, Mr. President and members of the board, Donna, will you give the board an update on, Donna works closely with our policy. We did get, we got quite a number of-
Sure. This is the most comments that we have received on a policy-
Ever.
Sometime. Fifty-three comments that came from employees, as well as parents and some students. And there was not a single comment that was in favor of revisions.
Why did we have to table this? Can't we just dismiss it? I mean, because I don't want people to think that this is still out there and it's not under consideration.
Or vote not to adopt.
Well, I just, I would make the motion that we vote to not adopt the changes.
Motion has been made not to adopt the changes into Harrison County, third policy, 3106.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hammack has made the motion. Mr. Doherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I might add that with the action you're about ready to take, that will take all the language that was proposed and essentially fill that language, and that the existing policy will still be in place. And I think this will address some of the concerns, well, in fact, it will address all the concerns that our employees had. So, please, Mr. President.
Right. And I guess, under my comments, would be that this reverts back to the, if we have an absenteeism problem, it reverts back to the place where it should be addressed first, as with the principal in that building. And I think our problem is, yeah, we have it, but it's a small problem in comparison to the amount of employees we have. Call for the question.
All right. So, the question has been called. Is anybody in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Policy 3106, language has not been adopted.
Mr. President, we have-
Very exciting. We're happy.
We have one more update, Mr. President. We have our esteemed board member, Kristen Messenger, maybe you, and your UTC update, which I think we have a little bit this time, though.
Well, actually, we're supposed to be having a work session tomorrow, that we're not going to be able to-
Well, no.
I'm not going to be able to attend, and he can't either, and so we need to get-
I can't believe there's stuff on hand.
I mean, the funeral.
Okay.
They said the visitation started at 11:00. The funeral wouldn't actually start until 1:00. The two people that are going to be there at this work session are the, yeah, the Byrds.
Well, here's that the Harrison County may not be there. So, I'll take that.
I mean, I just don't, I mean, this was a work session. We just felt that there is a disconnect in between the UTC and not only Harrison County Board of Education, but also Taylor and Dodgerge. And it's something that I have repeatedly repeated since I've been on the board, and I felt very ignored about. And I guess it all came to a head. And we are going to have a work session to look at different avenues and different recruiting is the word we want to use, to get more students there. So, there should be more tomorrow. Like, for example, that video is really, really good. And you know what I mean? And I just really think that we need to expand the program. My fear, like I told Dr. Manchin and the rest of the board, is that we're all going to have our separate places, because we have grown so much, Taylor County and Dodgerge County, that unless we do get together and start working as a unit to get people there, it's going to kind of be a very dismissed place, and it's such a critical place for our counties. So, there will be more of an update next. Is that it? There was nothing else?
Well, obviously, one of it was the work session, at least tentative for tomorrow, was to go over the director's goals, or at least create goals.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And Kristen brought a very good point up, that she wanted to know where the goals were. And, well, you go ahead. You can tell.
And there aren't any. Like, there's no answering to anything with the UTC. Basically, like, you know, Dr. Manchin, today at 4:00 o'clock, we had a meeting. We sent him a set of goals for the year as a board. And, you know, he then sets a plan on achieving them. Where the UTC has no goals, no answering. And so, that's where this all started, is when I said, you know, where are the goals? What are your intentions? And who's watching this? I'm a board. We're all a board, and I don't even know what we're supposed to be watching. So, the work session, it has a lot to do with setting goals for the director and where we want to see the UTC going.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent. Mr. President, that's the superintendent's update.
Make note of item B under superintendent's update is the bus orders that Mr. Hoag had asked about earlier, a total of eight buses to be ordered. This is for informational purposes only. This brings us down to consent items. Is there approval to approve the consent items as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack has seconded the motion. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, after-hours contracts for school psychologists. Is there a motion to approve the after-hours contracts for school psychologists for the 2019-2020 school year, as presented by the superintendent?
Make the motion.
Mr. Doherty has made the motion to approve the after-hour school psychologists. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll let Angela decide who wants that second. Doug can have a second. All right. Doug, Mr. Hoag has made the second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. How many times has this been utilized, after-hours? What do we consider the hours? I mean, do we have a great need for this? I mean, how often is this, do we have numbers?
We'll analyze that and meet timelines in case there's like a large quantity of referrals for evaluation coming at one time. So, they'll do, they've done some, they do some on evenings and weekends. There's $10,000 budget for the year. Last year was a little under that. So, I have that actual total, but I just made the math, given the number of kids.
Or if a crisis would arise, something would come up that the psychologists would need-
We get kids coming from out of county that we don't really have much information on, so they might bring them in on a Saturday, just to get some-
And just an assessment alone, that could be two to four hours, just to do an assessment.
Yeah. Yeah. So, they get $250 each, so combined in $10,000, the new math, but that's not how many they do a year.
Look at you.
No further questions.
No further questions. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Contract for Lori A. Bailey. This contract is presented to the board between the Harrison County Board of Education and Lori A. Bailey Independent Psychologist. Is there a motion to approve this contract between the Board of Education and Lori Bailey, as presented by the superintendent for the 2019-2020 school year?
So moved.
Ms. Messenger has made the motion to approve the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Is Lori the person for after-hours? Is that what this is going on?
Actually, she used to work for us, and now she works for Mon County. But when we searched for people that could give us a little help, she said she'd be willing to take some vacation days and come down here and test during the day for us if we got the time.
Okay.
So, she, even though she did a dozen last year, but she did some of ours.
Okay. They're not easy to find.
Yeah, not easy to find. They're good.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Music theory contract. Is there a motion to approve the music theory contract for the 2019, oh, excuse me, my contacts are wiling up on me. Music therapy contract for the 2019-2020 school year between Harrison County Board of Education and Milestones and Music LLC, as presented by the superintendent? So moved. Mr. Hammack has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Off topic of this, because, but it's music, so I forgot to bring it up under your superintendent's update. If we can please look into, like I said, it has nothing to do with this, but it's music related. The fact that I had some complaints, because we don't have a middle school strings program in Lincoln and Liberty, but we have a elementary and a high school in those schools, in those two schools. Doesn't make a lot of sense to have a strings program in your grade school and then nothing in middle school. You're not going to have a strings program in high school.
I thought we had-
A strings program in the middle school.
Apparently, this year, we don't have anyone teaching strings in the middle school feeder area for Lincoln and Liberty.
Yes. Now, Hayden reached out to me today. We met with Dora and Dr. Manchin in the spring, when Lynn brought this first to our attention, and we needed some survey numbers, which didn't give us as many survey numbers as we wanted. So, we'll do pre-registration with our high schools, then know to put that on their pre-registration scheduling information, so we can get some realistic numbers for that feeder. You added at Liberty two years ago. Yeah. But we didn't add at Lincoln. We didn't have the numbers at the high school level to justify the need.
So, what, yeah, take a look at that, because we had that whole thing about two years ago.
Because we did. And if you're looking at pure numbers, and let's say you have a bunch in the grade school, and then it falls off in the middle school, it takes a little while to build a program. If you only have a few, then you do away with it. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have grade school and then high school, and then nothing in between.
That makes sense. Makes sense.
So, you know, we just need to figure out something, even if you have to go a couple years where you have lower numbers, to try to build that program up.
Okay. So, we'll take a look at that, and give the board a report, since we have some information.
We're getting some numbers.
Good.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any further discussion on the music therapy contract? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Out-of-state professional leave and out-of-state travel study requests. Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Mr. Doherty has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Messenger has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
I might, for Mr. Hoag, then there'll be no cost to the Harrison County Board of Education or local money, because you always wanted, you always put that to our attention. Just wanted to make sure you saw that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This is why you serve revisions.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. This brings us down to the annual financial report. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 annual financial report- Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 annual financial report as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Ms. Messenger has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I might have our esteemed treasurer give us some insight prior to the vote. I think that there'd be some interest in, so, Mrs. Hinkle?
I'm still laughing, telling you all, but I'm not expecting you to read this, because I was talking to another treasurer, and she laughed, and she said, "Three people read my financial statements." And I'm thinking, "Three." She goes, "Me, my auditor," but she, the two I would name, "and my mom," because she wants to know what I've been doing all these weekends trying to get this done.
And I know you spent a lot of time on this here.
I, I've read enough to know how much money we have discretionary spending.
There you go. So, a couple things. Like I said, there's a lot of stuff in here, and in my opinion, it's not even that relevant, relevant to our day-to-day operations. It's just a lot of accounting stuff. But the bottom line is, and in the budget supplements and transfers that you just approved, we did have a fund balance in our general fund, because that's what everybody wants to know, is what your fund balance is. Our fund balance was $6.8 million. Now, of that, 5.2, if you remember, we assigned that when we started our budget, so that we needed $5.2 million additional money to balance our budget for FY '20. So part of that, 6.8, that gets knocked off of there. We had in conferences of about $18,000, which means we had some purchase records or some things that we hadn't gotten paid for yet. But then we ended up having $1.6 million unassigned, and that's where you all really like to hear. So some of that money will get set aside because we know we'll need it next year to balance the budget, and then we'll hopefully have some savings to add to that. But the good news is, we were able to do a couple of things that you all asked us to do, and most importantly, hopefully to help Dr. Manchin's goals, 200,000 more to the rainy day fund. So now you have a total of 400,000 in the rainy day fund, which I think speaks volumes, because most counties probably aren't doing that.
And that, you have to give, Mr. Hammack has really pushed for it.
Yeah, he has, he has. And I probably spoiled your big announcement on that because I told Kaylee the other day. So sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
And then I know you all talked about the YMCA, and Dr. Manchin went ahead and told, directed me to give 15 more thousand. So in addition to the 10 that we already had, we're adding 15 to that, so that will make a total of 25 budgeted for the YMCA. And if you all want to do something different, we can always change that, but just preliminarily, that's what we set aside. We did have some costs for our PRO officers that were a little higher than what we were anticipating, so I went ahead and put 21,000, offset that, because I knew we didn't have enough. I didn't, I don't know why I did this, because, but the new wash bay, our water bill's a little higher there now, so.
We haven't even started using it.
Oh, well, the water bill's a lot higher, so maybe they charged us for something.
Well, that's the other department.
Maybe, maybe we better check it, because I looked at it, and I was like, wow.
We just started using it.
That's an indication of a water leak.
Yeah, I'll check, we'll check on that then, because I did notice, I was like, why was this a little higher than I thought I was going to get?
How many times has Dr. Manchin washed his car after going out there?
They've been up here yet.
So, we do have about 850,000 set aside for next year's budget right now, and hopefully we'll have some savings, because we'll need to get that out of the 5 million like we did this-
And we don't, I mean, we haven't set an amount that, that we plan to dedicate to loss cream.
Just what, what the original, yeah.
But we haven't come up with the final number from the board, so.
And then the excess levy fund had a fund balance of 4.2 million dollars, which that's usually already spoken for something within the levy call. Our special revenue fund, and then lastly, our capital project fund, which is what we're paying for the Johnson project, it had a negative fund balance, but we do have some receivables and some encumbrances out there. So right now, it should be, we should be finished paying everything with the encumbrances. We haven't released those yet for the final payment to city window, but we have still 500,000 from the city of Bridgeport that we are holding as a receivable, and then we have about $7,400 from McKinley, because I guess we had to order some doors twice, and they said that they would pay for that, and I haven't really pursued it, but I've got that set aside.
So Bridgeport has not paid us the 500,000?
No, not yet.
Okay.
What's the holdup on that?
What is?
I don't know. Dr. Manchin.
Dr. Manchin's the holdup?
We have our attorney, who is in the process, Mr. Harris, Jim Harris, is in the process of negotiating the, the transfer funds. And we're pursuing that line right now, and we envision, there seems to be consensus, everybody agrees that they owe it to us, and I've got to Mr. Harris to come back when he's got the money.
What do you mean negotiate? How do you negotiate? They, they're trying to pay us less?
Well, they're, it's the uses of the facility, which, and I've got to be very careful, because this is still, as far as I'm concerned, still being worked out. City Bridgeport's been, okay, we're working with them, but that the uses of the facility has somehow became more of an issue than it originally was. They want some language that we're still working on. They want some language that gives them more comfort, and we just want to assure that the language that they want does not, does not infringe upon our students, and that's where we are, so.
Okay.
And, and I'll keep you apprised, but we are in that process. I've not heard from Jim. I told, I don't want to even see him until he's got the money, and I haven't seen him, so. But I'm sure he'll be back, and I'm sure we're going to get to see work done.
If you can apprise us at the next meeting.
Pardon me?
If you can apprise us even in executive session next meeting, because I would say after the next meeting, then we need to set a, a date. We need to set a date before the action.
In fact, I may have, I have Jim. Jim Harris.